You think, I'm not sure, lots of things, mismanagement, it could be tons of things, but did that, was that a problem?
I think one of the, one of the things that, that happened with Riblet is more and more all the time, even at the smaller areas, but small areas that have a lot of people riding it, they're going to the detachable lift. Well, if this is stuck in the rope, you can't detach it from the rope, so you can't get a detachable chair, and I don't know if you're familiar with it at all.
High-speed detaching.
High-speed detachables, the chair detaches from the haul rope and moves around the terminal at a slower speed, so it makes it easier for the skiers to get on the lift. And at the upper end, same thing happens, it detaches for unloading. But with this type of grip, you can't build a detachable lift. And to me, that was one of the things that led to their demise. Tony Souter, who was the founder of the company, was getting older, and, you know, I think that had something to do with it at the same time. But to me, that was the biggest thing, is all these areas wanted to go to detachables, which are, you know, if you want to put one of those in, you can get one for 2.5 mil, you know, that kind of thing. I mean, they're huge money, so, but that's what more and more of the areas are going to, just because of the ease and the comfort for the skier.
The glitz.
And the glitz, the glitz, exactly.
If they can afford it.
If they can afford it. Rick just mentioned that these, to put these grips in, now, the way you put the clip in is you actually squeeze the rope together, and it twists and opens up, and then the clip inserts into there, and then you let the tension off the rope, and it comes back. That is, there's a machine that they build, it's called a detentioner, and they have one, that came with the one from Shawnee, they have that here to be able to do that. So it's, it's a little bit of work, but it's, you have the equipment to do it, so it's not a piece that you have to buy special.
And that's the kind of thing that Fitz and crew can do.
He may have done it, he probably, he probably was involved with it when he worked at Shawnee. I can't say that for sure, but he did most everything else there, so, as you do with any ski area.
Jim, any further? I just asked most of the questions that I would, but when you relax, you know, the rope like that, does that affect the integrity at all?
No, you put this in, you take a little bit, there's a core, these are wire ropes, generally six strands of wire, and each strand is made up of 25 to 30 smaller wires woven all together. It's quite an interesting process. And there's a fiber or plastic core in there, they're going more to plastic now than they used to go to the hemp type thing. But you take a little piece of that out, this fits in there, and then you relax it and go. You keep that plug, and when you move the grip to a new location, which you have to do periodically, yearly, every two years, I'm not sure exactly which it is, I don't remember, you put that plug back in.
And it gives, it gives the maintenance people an opportunity to look inside the rope?
A lot of people, you know, I mean, as far as the wire rope inspections, I mentioned that, that that's done independently by an expert. When they do it, all they're typically doing is looking at the outside of the rope. And it's kind of like, I'm sure you people being around the water, you see the big ropes that are hooking up the boat. Well, it looks like that, oh, it's made of steel, and all you can look at is the outside. Actually, by putting these in, you can look into the inside of the rope, and when the rope is getting older, 20, 25 years, a lot of the time where you get the breaking of the wires, the nicking of the wires, that causes the rope to fail or be rejected, is what's happening on the inside of the rope, not so much on the outside of the rope, where you don't see it. You don't really know what's going on. So in some ways, there's a plus to this. You know, as Ross said, it may cause a little more nicking and breaking inside too, but there's pluses and minuses to both of that.
One other question I had, there was a reference within the letter about, you know, kind of what I recall as bumpy ride. Is bumpy, you know, the, I don't, and I'm not a, you know, certainly an engineer, but when you cross over a certain point, you're going to get some bounce, is that correct?
With this type of grip, you do. Your typical tower is a support tower, and the cable rides over the top of the tower, and thus you're suspended in the air. Every once in a while, because of the contours of the hill, and there's one or two, Fitz, on the chair that's out there now.
The cable would be in here.
Two, one and one.
Two, right, and then one part way out.
So the bump would be when this part goes over the shiv?
Right, and that's not too bad, but then if you go down, if you have to go like this with the, then you have to go under the shiv, and then you've got this big bump, and that's when you get a real bump, and if you, if you've ridden a chairlift, you'll, when you, like here at the snowball, when you're about two-thirds of the way up, just before you start up that last pitch, that's where your hold-down tower is up there, and you go, "Katunk, katunk, katunk, katunk." With this, it's the same, whether you're going above or below.
So you're going to get it with either one?
No, no, with this, you don't have a bump in the cable, I think you mentioned it, Leonard, that it's a smoother ride, because there's, the cable is the same size, top and bottom, all the way along, because there's no big grip sticking up above or below the cable.
So when that's within the cable, it doesn't expand that cable at that point?
That's why you take the plug out.
A little bit.
Yeah, but it's nothing noticeable over the, over the thing, but that, and again, that's why the cable and the grip have to be the certain size and...
They're matched.
Construction, they're matched, for part of the reason.
George, I've got something I read online. It's been said that code, that by code, the Riblet clip has to be relocated every two years or every 2,000 hours, and the Riblet actually made a special tool to...
And that's what we were talking about, this tensioner thing, is that's what, they have a piece of machinery that uses it.
Might be a manufacturer's recommendation also. I'm not sure.
What do you do about that, what you refer to as a plug? If you take that out of the cable?
Just throw it away.
I understand, doesn't that, like when you move it, it doesn't weaken the cable where it was?
They replace it with new material.
Put a new plug back in there.
Oh, I see.
Whether it's hemp or polyethylene strand or whatever it is, they always put new in there.
And you have to replace, you'll have to move these every year or a certain number of hours too, so.
And how long would cable last, or how long would a cable last with a double land lift? Or with a, with a lift that has that type of...
This, this type of grip?
It really depends more on the length of the lift, the number of shivs the chairs go over, so impacts, the number of revolutions a day it gets.
Going around the board wheel.
So it's more a question of fatigue, I think, than grip type. A ski area that operates day and night will have a shorter shelf life on either type of these pieces of equipment than a lift that gets used a little bit on weekends and almost not during the week.
On average, Ross, we operate 70 days a year?
Yeah.
65 or 70 days a year?
I mean, I always think, you know, 1,000 hours a year is an average, but that varies, you know, Pat Speed runs lifts at night, they do over 1,400, they have been for years. They've got a couple old Mueller lifts that are way beyond their shelf life.
Would you say the cable will last approximately the same regardless of what type of...
Generally, if, you know, if everything is, if the maintenance is the same and correct on both of them, it's going to be...
Same people are going to be making it.
Yeah.
How old's the cable on the current chairlift?
I don't have the records to go back far enough to know if they replaced all of that cable or just...
I believe they, I believe they spliced in a piece when they brought it down here. So some of it is from 1967, and the rest of it is from '72, '73 when it was put in here. As I remember, that's the way it is, because I get...
I remember a few years ago that they tightened the cable up, they re-spliced it.
That's correct.
I never remember them changing.
They stretch.
They stretch.
40 years is exceptional for a rope. I mean, everybody would like to get 40 years.
So well beyond exceptional?
On that one, I guess, you know.
I think it's, I think, if I remember it, Fitz, the, you know, they're keeping a closer eye on it. Is that right, Fitz?
Yes.
Because it's getting, it's getting there, it's going to need something.
They, they check it for diameter, outside diameter, and wear on the crown or the outside curved part of the wires that are in the rope, those are two major constituents for rope wear, as long, as well as the number of breaks in, how many strands, I don't know.
Yeah, different, there's a certain number of breaks per strand, and a lot of times you'll see the breaks at the tuck, if you know how to splice a rope, you tuck it back in and stick it back in, and because of that bending and whatever there, that's a lot of times where you're most susceptible to the breaks. And the reason they do the diameter is, especially with the hemp cores, when it's getting old, the hemp core will disintegrate, and that allows the strands to just, to kind of collapse upon themselves, and that's when you know you've got a, when that starts, as you said, they have to splice it. That usually, the first year or two that you put a rope in, you have to splice it because it's elastic and it stretches and it sets, and then you can go 25 years without having to touch it. But then, as it gets older, you have to, because the core's starting to get a little smaller, you have to re-s splice it, shorten it a little bit. But there are limits set by the ANSI code as to how much change, how many broken wires, you know, how much crown wear, and how much change in diameter.
There's a whole section here on wire rope.
Those are all items that are criteria for rejection of the rope, and that's what the rope expert does.
So the measurement of the diameter is one of your routine inspections?
Well, it's not mine, it's the haul rope inspection, the rope inspection.
They take several random measurements of the crown wear, wear, and the rope diameter, as well as do hands-on and visual check for any broken wires that tend to hurt when they go through.
I was going to say, that's one way of...
You run it, you run it slow.
Yeah, real slow.
That's the hard way. On a rope, like, would go on this Riblet, if it was a used rope and we didn't know the history of it, we would probably recommend an electromagnetic test on it. That's an X-ray that basically looks inside every inch of the rope, and it makes a blip on the chart where the indications are, and then if warranted, it's further inspected or it's rejected. But this will be a brand-new rope.
John, you have no question?
You just answered it.
I received it.
Yeah, you just answered it. So also, the new rope will be probably the new filler in the middle, right? Not a hemp, it'd be more of a... Probably poly... Probably, so you don't have that deterioration, so it'll be good.
Okay, last question's from members of the board, are we all set?
Can I ask one question? Can you put yourselves up here for just a second?
Sure, can I take some water?
You have to sit over here. You absolutely have some water. What questions, what would we be asking we haven't asked? What would you ask if you were, if you were up here?
Oh, I'd ask the area why they made the decision to go with a used lift, if you haven't already asked that.
No, I think that's, I think we've asked that question.
Do they feel comfortable with the used lift from a safety standpoint? My take on that is there's no reason why they shouldn't, because when it goes in there, it's been subjected to the same test, inspection, testing.
You probably want to sit back down, because I can hear you in the, with the...
Yeah, good idea.
My phone.
Oh, I thought we just sneaked out to you.
Okay, any other questions?
Fire away if you have any more, or if you think...
I just got one, I'm impressed that you guys came over like you did today, and really appreciate the service that you have in Camden in regards to this. When I heard that the two of you were going to be here, I was, I thought that was pretty fantastic, and I thank you both very, very much for coming.
It's my pleasure, I wouldn't have missed it.
Okay, I think we're now at the point in our program where we've had select board opportunity to question. We've heard some very interesting reports, and thank you two very, very much for that. So at this point, I now am going to open the floor for comments and/or questions, so now we will begin that process. Gentlemen, what I'd like to be able to do is have whoever is going to ask the question to be able to occupy one of those seats, or you can spread and let them sit in the middle. Okay, so up first, please, Paul.
That is then Steve Spith who wrote the letter, and it was important for me to, my client's not feeling well, it was important for me to explain to you, first of all, why my client wrote the letter, and how much courage it took for him to do that. This was not, this is someone who really loves the snowball, was very concerned about safety, and didn't want this to become public, wanted to see if they could solve this without business fundraising activities, and he didn't want to hurt the snowball in any way. But by doing a lot of work and looking at some evidence that we received, he came to different conclusions than your experts apparently did. I have, one thing I will say, that I researched, in the past, I researched a great deal about the law of what happens to skiers when they fail, and I don't know a single instance where a skater failed, it wasn't well-maintained, it hadn't been inspected. It wasn't well-maintained, it wasn't inspected, still failed. And the question was, you know, why, how does that happen? And I think one of the problems is that it's sort of like buying a used car, a very old car, that they don't make parts anymore, but if you maintain it, it will work, okay? But you cannot predict when it might fail. And when you compare it to a new car, that prediction becomes less and less certain. And that's one reason my client became concerned about a used chairlift, the prediction of what it might fail between the inspections. I told my client that I would talk to you about, I want to live it today, I can't now, if it's limited today, talk to you about insurance. This manufacturer, Riblet, is no longer in existence. If you bought a car brand-new, you get a warranty, you make this comparison, and if something happens, you know, to the car that reaches a warranty, they'll fix it. But that doesn't mean that later on, if it's a design defect of the car, a design defect, that you can't sue the manufacturer for product liability liability. General motors will still be there. And one of the downsides of putting in a lift made by a manufacturer who's no longer in existence, that product liability is no longer there. And the two-you-are-you has nothing to do with it. If there's a design defect, it goes on until, if you can prove a design defect, you can try to recover. So that's one of the downsides, of any time anyone buys anything from a manufacturer that no longer is in existence, if there's a design defect. The other problem is, is that when you have used equipment, and I've been on this as an attorney, I have been involved in litigation on several occasions, and it isn't simple when there's an accident, a skater. The problem is, whose fault is it? Is it the installer who put it in? Is it the new, in this instance, new parts that came in? Or is it the design of the, of the lift itself? Makes it much more complicated. So there's a problem. Usually what happens is that the installer and the person who puts the parts in says it's a design defect from the manufacturer because they're not there. They point to the empty chair usually. I'm not saying that would happen here, that often happens. That's one another downside of not having a new lift. The, the safety, of course, is the ultimate concern, and when my client saw that this heavy thing being what is a new lift, and this light product here being what's supposed to be used now, it just seemed obvious by inspection from, and I'm not challenging your experts, that one is safer than the other because of its design strength. Now, there's something to be lost and something to be gained in everything you do, but my client then went on to look, you get an opinion of another expert, that's what you have in front of you, about the concerns that expert had about this design right here. And I have taken, I have, just looking at, just taking a picture of it, just looking at the differences in the size, this certainly looks more sturdy than this does. It doesn't mean this is unsafe, but it certainly looks a lot sturdier than this does. I just heard these people say that this was just as good as this, and this was just as good as this. It's a remarkable conclusion. For safety purposes, the, I show you here what also concerned my client when he came concerned about this lift. He called up my, I asked him to supply some of that letter you have in front of you. And obviously, that, Wollmeyer's competitor has some, some lack of independence, but he expressed an opinion that is inconsistent with what your experts have told you. I have a picture here, I will pass it around, of how would you insert this into the, this here, into the cable? The claim is made is that that does not, that does not disturb the strength of that cable. That's what they're saying, it will not disturb the strength of that cable. And that this, who goes wrapped around it, is just as good. So you can look at this, and this is why my client became concerned, because if you, I'm an expert, if you look at that, it kind of defies common sense. How can something go in something, use that as leverage, and not wear it out? Now, true, you may, if you expect it enough, maybe it might work, but it may cause problems. Here's another picture of this, this fall. But it was only after my client got a letter from another expert saying that they had concerns about this thing, you brought this forward, and I'm not an engineer, here's my client. We did go on the internet, however, to find out about Riblet and about this connection. There was a recall of this connection. I'll pass this out to you. There was a recall on it. Never mentioned by these experts, recall. Recalls are a result of things not working. Recall on this one. And I'll pass this out to you. As a result of that recall, they said the, that this should be inspected every two weeks according to this article that got off the internet. I don't verify the article, I just read it. It seems to be something that you want to be interested in. This is another article that talks about why periodic inspections of the Riblet, of this thing, is required on a much more aggressive basis than an inspection like this. And the problem was, according to this article, and this is independent of it, claiming that there's cracks of more than a fourth of an inch in length that sometimes appears more often than not. Now, I'm not an expert, and my client is an expert, but he had these articles given to him that saw it on the internet, which caused him to be very concerned about what's happening here. I'll pass this out to you. It was my theory, by the way, that if the town hired an engineer and said, "Look, I'm independent, and I will certify to you that if this, this is a safe chairlift," and I guess the problem really is, is that I was always certain that once you installed it with an engineer, that it would work, and that it would pass inspection. The problem is, would it fail during the interval between one inspection, one inspection and the next, based upon the history of this connection? The other issue I didn't see talked about, and I don't know what the answer to this is, but the difference in the expense between cost to maintain a used chairlift, especially one like this, with parts that have to be made, than putting in a new one. I didn't hear a discussion about that. And that could be an important discussion, but that has nothing to do with safety, we got to keep it up. But that's another interesting topic that was not discussed here today. But our concern mainly was the safety of this, of the lift, based upon the connection, and based upon the history of Riblet, and the fact that it is no longer in existence. So my client did a lot of work, called up an expert, called up two or three experts, and he's a lifetime skier, loves the snowball, and said, "Well, I'm going to tell someone by the time." Not because for his own profit or his own gain, because he was concerned. And it was really hard, because everyone working with the snowball is a volunteer and they work hard, and the people that work at the snowball are good people and they work hard. And there's no, that isn't the issue. But that's a problem, because they're volunteers and they're trying to do the right thing. But we had a concern that this chairlift, based upon the information that we received, is not as, is not as safe as perhaps it could be. And we don't know, if you have, an engineer tells you that this is going to be okay, then maybe you're okay. But certainly, the history of this, of this outfit, it's not being in existence anymore. The lack of product liability insurance is that there is a problem, and the cost to maintain it in the condition that needs to maintain it to be safe, and the risk you might take, because there's an increase in risk by buying an old car. You don't know when it's going to fail. But when it fails, you're just stuck on the road. Here, there's a much more serious consequence. Now, the problem, I think, too, is, the safety issues on this are not rampant, I mean, the problem is, is that the higher the risk, the more cautious you usually are. If someone said, "I'll give you $10, block, put a board between these two chairs and run across it," I'd do it instantly. But if they put that same two-by-four between two skyscrapers, then go to the top of the building, same task, but the consequences of failure are so great. And that's what my client was concerned about, the consequence of not predicting the failure. There's something lost and something to be gained in everything that you do. It's a very difficult decision, but if you have experts on your side, I think you should, you should probably listen to them. But we had, that's why we had this real legitimate concern, because we wanted to help the town of Camden and the snowball, and not to, to make anyone look bad or challenge decisions that people have passed. And it takes a lot of courage for someone to do all that research and to come forward knowing that it was public like it is now, it would probably involve more participants than I'm concerned. And to still go forward under those conditions, I think it shows that someone very much concerned about the snowball, loves it very much, and is doing something that most citizens would not do, because they want to be a good citizen. So this isn't about personalities. And I'm not an expert, and neither is my client, but we had legitimate information, my client did, that caused him to be concerned, and still causes him to be concerned, as to what is the best thing to do. And that decision's up to you. I will pass out to you some pictures of these two connections, but behind it, I have questions that talk about, that I think you need to have answered about these two connections. It's not so much that I'm asking the, your experts to predict a failure. It's not so much that I'm asking the, your experts to predict a failure, or that for certain, this isn't going to work. The question is, what is the risk? What is the risk? And what harm would you cause if there's a failure? And that's a real difficult decision. That is a real difficult decision. Well, pass this out. I'm looking at the questions here. You may want to look at it and ask your experts later, but it has to do with the connection.
Are you, pardon?
I notice I have three minutes, so I'm trying to keep you. So if you've got any questions, I'll...
Yes, I do have a question, if I could, please. And I'll check with other members of the board as well.
I just want to say, like both quarters, I could talk for a long time, but I have my...
Okay. So I want to ask, at any time, the findings of this report, was there any effort made to contact members of the committee to do this presentation to the committee prior to submitting the letter to the town?
I don't think I understand the question, but I will tell you this much. It was my client's expectation and my expectation, that this would, we were hoping that this would go to the committee and never go talk to the committee about it, about the report.
So there wasn't a direct effort to go to the committee with this prior to the letter?
I don't think so, was it?
Okay.
That was because we expected to be able to do that directly with this letter.
Yeah. And part of what I wanted to say, too, is I understand the need for disclosure, and wanting to talk about safety, that sort of thing, but it's also our diligent effort as board and as town, and once this hits, you know, the town office is public. We got no choice. This is, this is how the process works. I think you're very well aware of that. So I kind of cringe when I hear something that says, "Oh, this wasn't meant to be public."
Well, my, I thought my client had sent this to the snowball, the committee of the snowball. I thought that's where it was going. And that's the problem. It went to the town. We thought if it went there, that that would have been, that's how that happened.
Yeah. And I certainly understand the need for wanting, and again, full disclosure, but part of, you know, where I'm coming from, too, is that the folks, very folks that have done the work, the hard work with this, too, I think had the right to, you know, to hear these kind of findings. You know, this became certainly very public, because it is a matter of public safety at that point, but that's sort of an editorial comment on my part. Insurability, I think, you know, I did check into the insurability question, and since we have, you know, a lift that was probably put in around 1967, or made in 1967, we still carry full insurance on it. And to my knowledge, we've never had a question, any question in that whatsoever.
I disagree with that.
So I would defer to questions, any questions from the board here at this point?
Just a statement. First of all, you really made me nervous, because I don't want to sadder.
Thank you.
I don't know if I'll be able to get home tonight at all.
Since she's talking, I gotta sob, too.
And you have a sob, we're in trouble. But the second thing is, in all seriousness, I really, right away, I want to thank your client for bringing this forward to the community, when in fact he had a concern, and made it available to be discussed by the community. For us to get input about his concern that dealt with public safety, that was very admirable of your client to do that, and very courageous, really.
Thank you very much. Don?
I'm going to echo in a way Lenett's comments. Paul, it's very important that this whole subject be discussed, and I've had, and I make this comment to everybody, I love passion on both sides of the subject, and I think it's very important that it have a public airing. So your client has brought us all together, where we hadn't been getting together on a regular basis, and now behind the scenes, we're talking about ways that we might meet on a more regular basis, as a select board, as the committee, and tell the public about what's going on up there in the mountain. A lot of hard work has gone into this, and there's two sides to every story. So I want to thank, you know, your client for bringing this out in the open. Pardon me, Mr. Chair, but I think this is the place to get it discussed with everybody that's here, and there might even be some people who want to speak on it. And to follow up, what this asks a lot of questions, so I would be more than happy to relinquish any more of my time if somebody, the two experts, wanted to discuss some of these questions that have been asked on this site. Would that be okay?
I think it's kind of unfair to throw a bunch of questions out there and not have that...
Well, I'm not asking you, Mr. Chair, I'm asking...
Yeah, you just did ask me, Don.
I asked if we could hear from them.
Yeah, that's what you're asking me, if they want to answer the questions. I defer their judgment, but, you know, I'll ask them if they're prepared to address any of those questions that we have not seen at this point.
Mr. Chairman, before you say, one more question.
Yes.
I guess what is very important to make this point is that, in bringing about this issue, I mean, it is not that we're trying to challenge your experts' opinions, it's just that we challenge you that we had different opinions. And that's what our concern was. And that's important, you know, we weren't trying to put anybody in a difficult spot. But that's, we still feel strongly that there's concerns.
No, no, I think, my point now, the whole thing was, that I think protocol would have had me go to the committee first, to let them know, because I still think that that was sort of a blind side. John?
I have a question, Paul. You mentioned this recall. Was that before the redesign? You mentioned they had redesigned...
Yes, sir. I don't know, but I think it was before the redesign.
So they actually, the company redesigned the product after this recall?
These memos are somewhat dated.
Okay.
It's November 16th, 2000.
Perhaps at this point, I'd ask Ross and George if they'd like to come down and do a quick review.
Before you do that?
Okay.
I would also like to point out, Paul, is that they rebuild cars every day, and when, a lot of times when they get done, they're worth hundreds of thousands of millions of dollars, and worked as fine as the day they rolled off the floor. So, and I've also seen brand-new cars fail. So I mean, whether it's brand-new or not, I mean, you've got, there's always a chance of structural failure in anything, no matter what it is. But you do your best to inspect it and do the maintenance, to make sure that it works properly, and does what it's designed to do.
But my point to you is that, given those two chances, new car failure, old car failure, I would say, chances of the old car failure. Because you can't predict what's going to happen.
True, but you can't, I mean, like I told you, I've seen new stuff break. You know, so, sorry to interrupt.
No, no, that's fine. Gentlemen?
I'll just quickly run through them, if you don't mind.
Certainly.
Just, this has been a little aside, but to Don's remark that he made here just a second ago, I think that's why we have a lemon law of the new car failure, but...
If these, if these products had proven to be a danger in the industry, they would not be manufactured today.
And I would add to that, Ross kind of made the comment, that these bulletins, as, I think they're all dated, both of them are dated, November 16th, 2000. I can't sit here and tell you the date. I'm saying that these, without a doubt, are the bulletins. My guess is that that is a redesigned, upgraded clip, because I remember when Shawnee Peak and a bunch of the other ones that I inspect had to go through and replace all of their clips. That's something that certainly Ross, I would, without putting words in his mouth, but something that I'm sure Ross will look into prior to going ahead and recommending that these be used. If they aren't the upgraded ones, then the upgraded ones are available from two different companies.
Right. There are a number of issues I could get into to put this matter to rest, specifically related to the Shawnee Peak installation. I'd be happy to do that.
But if you want, I can, I'll take a whack at this list of questions real quick. The riblet grip, how is it inserted into the haul rope? Well, I think his picture and the tool that I described give you a good indication of how it's inserted.
You address it?
I know, you open it up, and you take out a part of the core, and you put it back together, as it's shown in that picture. Squeeze it together, and go. When is, when the grip is inserted in the cable, is there a special tool? Yes, and you have that tool onsite, ready to go. Commonly come with the lift equipment? Yes. When the lift, riblet grip is inserted in the haul rope, does part of the core come out? Yes. Once the grip is inserted, how long does it stay in that spot? I believe that the, is it one year or a thousand hours? Or it's, there is a limit in the code, and that was put out there by Riblet.
I'd have to check the manufacturer's current service bulletins, and also the NC standard on that one.
Correct.
I have to believe that Shawnee Peak was abiding by all the requirements, and that the lift underwent satisfactory service life over there.
And I would say that's, I would back up that statement. What is the procedure from removing the haul rope? Excuse me. It's basically a reversal of putting it in, quite frankly. What type of testing is done on a haul rope grip? NDT testing is done, at least. It used to be, I believe it said in this one that came out in 2000, it's 10%, I believe it's now 20%.
All manufacturers are down to 20%. And the testing agency that Fitzy uses for the snowball is quite familiar, not only with the non-destructive inspection requirements for checking whether any rope grip has cracks or defects, but also the dimensional requirements, which are equally as important, on a clamp-type grip or on this rope clip.
Is there a way to visually inspect the haul, the riblet grip to be confident it is healthy? Well, just like any other piece of metal, you can look at it, and if it's badly cracked, undoubtedly it will show up.
If the, if the grip does not meet the specific wear tolerance requirements, or manufacturer's requirements that are current and in existence, it would be rejected. And that's why Fitzy hires an expert, an independent testing agency, to look into those things.
Number nine, it says, "Is, it is understood that riblet grips do not migrate in the haul rope over the ski season. Is this lack of migration a good thing for the life expectancy of the haul rope?" My comment to that is that it does not seem to have a, any major impact by any means, and it may, I don't think it really has any impact if it's, if it's inserted and then...
Relocated according to schedule.
Relocated properly, right. And if the core is replaced correctly and those types of things. So again, it comes down to the maintenance, the care of doing the work. Does all this inserting, removing, reinserting degrade the haul rope? I do not believe that it has a discernible impact on the length, the life of the haul rope.
It wouldn't have any more detrimental effect on the life of a haul rope, as would a clamp-type grip being inappropriately installed and overtightened, which happens routinely.
Right. Now, we move on. Are you satisfied that we've looked at all those?
We've been reading Riblet service bulletins, Doppelmeier service bulletins, C-Tech service bulletins, and every other service bulletin for our entire career. And they get brought to our attention, so yes, we are familiar with them.
The external grip, how is it mounted on the cable? The grip sets like this, the cable is in here, this, there's a spring pack in this piece here, and you break it down, and so that this piece moves and squeezes the haul rope.
The rope goes through just like that.
There you go.
And this clamps based upon the spring pressure.
So it's gripping on the outside of the haul rope. Once the grip is, number two, once the grip is mounted on the haul rope, is there a procedure to be sure the grip is properly installed on the haul rope? There is a testing requirement that is actually pull test against the grip once it's been seated on the haul rope. Typically, you adjust the spring pack, or what you think is the correct tension, by either a measurement, or by a torque on the nut on the back of it, to, different manufacturers have a couple of different ways of doing it. Once that is seated according to what they say, you put a clamp on here, and you basically pull back with a dynamometer or spring pack to a certain amount, a minimum amount, that Ross kind of mentioned, there's a formula, depending on your, your installation, that you have to pull it, to make sure that grip does not inadvertently slip back, you know, that it is tightened to the correct. Not too tight, and not too loose. Some of them, if not all of them, have a maximum and a minimum that you should pull to. They want it to slip a little bit, but because they don't want it too tight.
In the last three or four years, the state of New Hampshire has wanted designers and people that write seven-year dynamic test procedures for chairlifts to specify the maximum rip pull test, so that hopefully overtightening of the grip is going to be
Overtightening can, is probably the most damaging thing from this type of a grip. The other thing that will happen on this type of a grip is you'll get wear in these jaws, and get some sharp pieces on the jaws that will tend to cut into the wires of the haul rope.
Or locating them too close to a splice.
Or locating them too close to a splice. But that, again, that's a wear thing that will be noticed when you do your NDT. You have to do 20% of these, just like you do those. And that's part of, it's not just taking an X-ray machine or something and doing the NDT, they have to check measurements and look at these jaws.
When either of these devices is shipped new from the manufacturer, they must come with a certificate of non-destructive inspection, all of them.
Right. And each grip now, from all manufacturers, has an identification number stamped into the clip. This one does, and that clip does. I don't know if you can pick it up readily on that one or not, but they all come with. So you can tell which grip was in which chair. A lot of the, most places now keep track of that, as to the grip and the chair number.
It's the skier and maintenance people's responsibility to document which parts they're testing, which parts are installed on the lift, and which parts, if any, are rejected.
Right. And they rotate this 20%, so that in a five-year timeframe, you've gone through each and every chair, and in, you know, the chair hanger and all the other parts of the chair, along with the grips. How often do the external grips need to be removed from the haul rope and chair for testing? 20% per year?
They all have to be moved. 20% have to be non-destructively tested.
The next question, how often do the grips need to be relocated? They all need to be removed a consistent amount each year, and then re-clamped and retested. And then you take 20% of those off, and actually do all the other extra testing on it. It is understood that an external grip migrates on the haul rope over the course of the ski season. How and why does this happen? Is a migration good for the, good thing for the life expectancy of the haul rope?
Oh, grip migration is normal, usual and customary. And the haul rope must be marked by the maintenance people that move or install the grips. Every time a grip is moved or taken off and a new one placed on the haul rope, its location has to be marked with a paint mark or something like that. So in the course of everyday inspection and routine maintenance of the ski lift, maintenance people can go over there, look at the paint marks with respect, with respect to the grip locations, and the main thing they're looking for is, do they all move about the same amount, or has one moved five feet, and the rest of them typically move 18 inches? That's a problem that somebody should pick up on. At that point, they should pull the grip off the lift, make sure all the parts are adequate, not worn, and probably re... adequate, not worn, and probably replace the grip with another one that has previously been non-destructive tested, repull tested.
The other issue that you have with these, these will, you have to keep them a certain distance away from the top points of the cable. When you're doing a splice, you tuck it in. That creates a different, somewhat different diameter of the cable. If these get too close to that, you're actually squeezing on to the, because it's a piece of steel cable in that core now, not a piece of somewhat flexible, it'll change the way this thing grips and the amount of pressure that it's putting on the thing. So there's definitely, in that ANSI code, there's 24 diameters, I think it is, the haul rope, 24 times the haul rope is the closest you can get to a grip to this. So that's something that has to be taken.
For either type, it's the same.
Right, as far as that, but I mean, this one can migrate towards the haul ropes, and that's something else you have to keep an eye on. Is it good for the life expectancy? I guess it doesn't hurt, but I don't know that it, it probably doesn't really make that much difference. I mean, you don't see any difference, or you see little difference, but you don't necessarily see any difference in, some of these grips, some manufacturers, the grip will move six inches over a year, and other ones, they'll move four or five feet, but as long as they all move consistently, because each, each, a lot of it seems to be how many times you go around the bullmills.
Right.
The shorter the lift, the more migration you'll get typically.
Right.
So if you've got two lifts, and one's 5,000 feet long and one is 2,000 feet long...
And use night and day.
And use the same amount, same manufacturer, the 2,000-foot one will move probably twice as much. What is the advantage of the riblet grip over the external grip?
The biggest advantage historically is smooth ride, and secondly, is economy. The riblet lift traditionally was not the most expensive lift on the market. A lot of people bought them, particularly in the West and Midwest, and to some extent in the East. Hall Ski Lift Company, which now is a legitimate child, if you will, Doppelmeier was an Eastern company, they were out of Watertown, New York, and their prevalence is substantially in the East and Midwest.
And then the last question on this page is, what's the advantage of the external grip over the riblet grip?
I'm not sure there is one. If there was anything that was a particular concern to me, I would let everybody know about it. Likely, I wouldn't specify them. There is such a thing as liability council, which people like me, experts in the industry, extremely, which extremely wears safety, and it lives to be designed for our clients. Those two things never, ever for me go without me thinking about.
If I could make one comment about one of these bulletins that he passed out, this is bulletin number 136, and he has highlighted, every two weeks during the operating season, regardless of hours of operating, make a visual examination of each chair and each clip. I believe Ross mentioned that during his discussion, that there was periodic visual testing that was supposed to be, supposed to be done. It says, "For chairlifts more than six years old or with more than 6,000 hours of operation, the following will be added. Grasp the chair and twist it in both directions while looking at the chair hanger and chair clip. Any damage to the upper hanger or fracture of one of the clip inserts will be visually apparent as well as indicated by feel of the chair as it's being twisted." Okay, that's something that's done. There are other lift manufacturers out there that require generally the same thing. They want you to do a shape test of the chairs periodically, may not be at the exact same timing, but periodically, to check the hangers, you know, the bales in the hanger and that type of thing, and the grips, and they use an external grip. So it's, it's not a special thing, per se, to the, to the clip, and there are a lot of areas that do it, even if they aren't required, because they feel it's a good indication of what's going on with that chair, bale, hanger, and grip or clip, whatever the case may be.
Okay. Sure.
Just a couple of questions. Is the cable essentially, the composition of the cable the same on both hangers?
Generally speaking, yes.
Want to work for the other?
Well, as he said, this is, this is kind of specific for this, for the clip. You have maybe a look...
So you have to get a different type of haul rope for that one than...
Well, you could use the same haul rope, but you have to make sure you get the right haul rope for that.
The haul rope has to be a certain diameter and certain strand specification.
And that's readily available?
Oh, sure.
And the other question I have is, to the best of my knowledge, Riblet was the only manufacturer that built a clip like that?
I think that's a fair statement. SLI Ski Lift International made one that isn't much bigger than this, and it was a clamp-type grip, but it had the same approximate width. There were manufacturers that made clamp-type rope grips that did not have the ability to adjust clamping force. Those are, and have been prohibited by the standard for a long time, over 20 years.
But what I'm wondering is, we've heard testimony that that's quieter, that it's more economical, and yet manufacturers have not copied that design in modern lift technology. I'm curious why.
Good question.
I kind of believe, and this is just my, my opinion, but they had started out using this, they found that this suited their needs and whatever, and they just stuck with it as much as anything.
Superior Tramway came as close as anyone did to copying the Riblet insert clip, but there must have been some substantial dimensional differences or material differences so that it's not an identical copy. And I'm no expert on patents, but I think the two people have set the precedent for this type of a clip.
Okay. Before we revert back to public comment, any further questions? Okay. Thank you. While you're still around, we're going to seek any other public comments at this point. So anybody else from the audience would like to come down and ask questions and/or comments, please? Yes?
A question to you guys. Shawnee Peak...
Could identify yourself?
Yeah, hi, Rob Isarid, I'm from Rockport. Shawnee Peak replaced their lift, but what did they replace it with?
They haven't replaced this lift yet. They're thinking about taking out a T-bar that goes all the way to the tops of the mountain and putting in this triple chair.
No, Shawnee...
Shawnee... Oh, I'm sorry. They replaced it, and I did all of the engineering and work on that. CTEC, mid-'80s version, comfortably priced lift from Loom Mountain.
It's a, it's a CTEC chairlift?
C, T-E-C, Cable Transportation Engineering Company.
Just curious, and was there any particular reason they, what was their main reason for replacing it?
The owner wanted a slightly wider chair for some of his friend slash seasoned passengers.
That's it?
He wanted a quad.
No, he put in a triple. He put in another triple that was installed at Loom Mountain in 1984.
Wow.
And a lot of us, including the general manager, helped that lift, that lift would have been much better installed in some new location with Shawnee Peak to serve a more variety of terrain.
Interesting, okay. And then the other question was, as far as paint versus galvanizing, you mentioned that overall, the maintenance interval in paint and galvanizing and inspection process, it's identical, but obviously the maintenance on paint is what, every 10 years or, I'm trying to say?
It depends on so much, you know. I've seen a paint job turn bad in five years because of...